Briscoe come to the mic. Steven Briscoe is a bright, dedicated third grade student at Southern University Laboratory School where he proudly maintains a 4.0 GPA and was recently recognized as the September Student of the Month. Steven demonstrates exceptional teamwork, responsibility, and kindness towards his peers. With a strong passion for mathematics and science, the six foot seven Steven brings enthusiasm and curiosity to every lesson. Outside the classroom, he enjoys drawing and building with Lego bricks showcasing his creativity, his positive attitude, dedication, and joyful spirit make him a role model for classmates and his teachers truly adore him. Steven is the proud big brother of Silas, a first grader at Southern Lab and attends Immaculate Conception Catholic Church. He is the son of Dr. Steven Briscoe Jr. and Maisha Beverly Briscoe, who is a graduate of the Southern University. Steven Briscoe III, you have the floor, young man.
Good morning, Board Chair, Board Chair Clayton, Vice Chair Abraham, members of the board, President Shields and guests. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Stay there a second, hold tight. Bring. My job. On behalf of all of these folks, want to give you a little talk, the book bag and another bag.
Load it up, man.
You are the same height as Myron Lawson.
Maybe a little taller.
Thanks, man.
You're welcome.
Real good job, brother. Amen.
Good looking kid, huh? All right, special, um, this presentation by, um, Mr. Donneri. Invocation, before we do that, we need to ask for God some blessings, I forgot about that. Reverend Dale Flowers, our former chief of police, Mr. Flowers, come on up.
As we bow our heads in prayer, eternal God, our Father, we thank you for another glorious day which you have made. You did not have to wake us to see it, but we're all glad you placed us on your wake-up list this morning. Father, we thank you for this life and for life eternal. You provide through Christ Jesus, God, our words, our thoughts and actions. We lift this university, Southern University A&amp;M College, its system, each campus, student, faculty, staff, administrator, chancellors, president, and board of supervisors to you in prayer. We pray that this board, as they gather to make decisions that will not only impact our current status, but will have a lasting impact for generations to come, will make decisions according to your will and not theirs alone. We further pray that you will not allow this time of retribution, punishment, and pettiness cause them to cower to temporary power, but stand on your infinite unlimited power. Help them to stand for justice and righteousness. Hear the cries of this university, answer our pleas, in Jesus' name, amen.
Hold on a second, Rev.
On behalf of the board, uh, significant appreciation to Reverend Dale Flowers, Pastor New, Sunlight Missionary Baptist Church, Baton Rouge, and Redwood Baptist Church, Zachary, for providing spiritual enrichment for September twenty twenty fifth, September twenty five, monthly.
All right, Donneri, I'll turn it over to you for a special recognition.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and the President for this opportunity to make this brief acknowledgement. If, if you are a campus police, I would like for you to come forward, or a system police for that matter. Please come forward.
What about DA's?
No DA.
District.
All right, Chief, good to see you. All right, all right.
Good morning.
Wow. Actually, we ought to give him a standing ovation. I want to let the system and, and the members of the board know that some of these officers worked all night and they stayed, stayed around for this opportunity. I just want to personally say to all of you, thank you for the work you do, thank you for your visibility and your professionalism. I want you to know it does not go unnoticed. I also want to say, uh, briefly, uh, as I did an assessment, and Desiree, you should come up too for the work you do, because most of these people, most of these officers I talk with, they speak very highly of you and, 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 and your professionalism and communication with them. I want to thank you as well. So, Mr. Chair, I did a brief assessment of the new vehicles that came on campus that went to the police department, and I just want to let you know that you are slacking because the barn kind of outditched you. Uh, you're gonna have to go back to your shaft to kind of catch up. I'm, I'm very disappointed in you.
So, let me, let me comment on that.
And his chef, and his chef said you don't want to get in the match with him.
Well, let me tell you, Mr. Ruddish deserves some kudos, uh, in that he got sheriff, uh, Gootro, Gootro to give some vehicles. But, you know, I saw President Trump do a military display of power, and Donneri, this is your military display of power. Thank y'all for what y'all do for this university, particularly saving, making sure our kids are kept safe. It does not go unnoticed. Uh, I'll be the first to tell you, and I'll let the President and Chancellor, we probably should find more money for you. And, and we will do whatever we can, but, but trust me, you put your lives on the line for these kids, and, and we love you guys for what you do. And from, on behalf of this entire board, uh, uh, thank you. I'll defer to my Vice Chair to say something to you guys and then the President.
Yeah, I think the Chairman, I couldn't say it any better than what the Chairman just, uh, just said. Um, uh, share the same comments, appreciate all the work that you do. I personally have two kids that are on campus, uh, stay in the dorm back there and always tell me that, you know, they feel comfortable and safe in the environment. Uh, so we appreciate you for the work that you do, and again, it does not go unnoticed. Thank you.
Mr. President?
You know, it, uh, we, 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 we look for grand moments, but a lot of times the success that we have at anything we ever endeavor to do is what happens day by day. What you folks do is show up every day, every night, put your lives on the line, and protect the students, number one, but everyone on this campus, and you have my heartfelt gratitude for all that you do.
Chief, I have one question. Who's patrolling the campus now?
Everybody. We do have the checkpoints covered.
I want to add one more thing, uh, and I want to charge everybody in the system, especially in this room, that we, uh, treat our campus police in the system with dignity. They're not beneath anybody, they, they, they risk their lives every day. When you see them, salute them, treat them with high class dignity because they deserve. And all of these episodes, recent episodes we just had, uh, we came out, uh, positive for the most part, and it's because of the work that the President and his administration and the system and you, ladies and gentlemen, do. And I want to say, thanks.
One, one, one person, Dr. Lawson?
Yeah. And I want to thank you too, is what they.
Can you stand, can you stand up?
I'm the same height, one way or the other, Tony. But, uh, I want to thank them for what we don't see they do, and, uh, they go out of the way. Uh, they are community police folk, and I appreciate that, what you do. But I've been hearing from a fellow by the name of Corporal Baldwin, uh, Chief, and I think we certainly deserve to get you all some four-wheelers too, because they're in the community policing. And Chancellor, I know, I'd like to hear from him too, because I know his love for the, uh, uh, police force and what they do. I want the person to say thank you, and I want to do what we can to give them whatever resources we can as finance chair of this chair. Thank you.
We have on this board a gentleman who served as United States Marshal, and now he serves as the Sheriff of Cattle Parish. I would be remiss if I wouldn't turn this microphone over to our sheriff, so he can speak to his colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, with over four decades of, uh, law enforcement experience, I too want to say thank you for what you do. Uh, it's more than just, uh, law enforcement, it's more than just providing safety. Y'all are in a position to ensure the education process of this institution and the campuses , uh, within the system. Uh, you may not recognize it, but, uh, y'all are the ones that, that make it happen, uh, because if our students didn't feel safe, that they wouldn't be able to explore the curiosity that, uh, we expect in our classroom. They wouldn't be able to rest in their dormitories, and they wouldn't have peace walking the walkways on our campuses. So, what you do is vital to the operation of this institution and to the entire educational process. So, thank you so much for what you do.
And, Mr. Chair, one more acknowledgement, uh, we have our former colleague, Mr. Fondere here, and when I served with him, along with him in my previous appointment, he, he, this was his, uh, baby. He was really on top of this, and I want to acknowledge him for, you know, being involved with some of the things, trying to help our police, uh, Mr. Fondere, you want to say something?
Any closing remarks, uh, Chief? Ms. Fondere, you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd like to. First of all, good morning to everyone that is here, uh, to my esteemed colleagues that I've served with in the past, to the new members here. Uh, for me, it's a very proud moment to be able to see the officers that are here on today, uh, one of which is my roommate from college from, what, thirty, forty years ago, as we sit here. But this department is a reflective of this university. The chief that is here, she's been here for over thirty-plus years from a student, working her way up from writing tickets all the way to being the chief here, from what, twenty fifteen to date, twenty thirteen to this date, so twenty fourteen to this date. So, she's been real good at recruiting folks. A lot of these folks that are here have come from the campus, they've come from the campus here. And I met her in twenty fifteen, I want to say, seen her before. When I sat here, and I think a few of you remember this, there were two young ladies that passed away, that were shot at this university, and not, that were shot away at another location. And they were students here at the university. So, I had an opportunity to meet her, and I committed myself, because I was with both of those families, when their daughters, when they saw their daughters for the first time. I wanted to commit to safety here, went and spoke with her, they set up the checkpoint up front, they brought in all these great officers that are here, and, uh, even a new officer, I think they have, where's, where's your, uh, one of the newest officers here on the team, which is a comfort dog, a husky, here that they're gonna show. This is one of the newest officers here at the campus. So, I, I'm thankful for an opportunity to be able to come and speak with you and to acknowledge the good that has been here over the years that they've been doing. So, with that being said, thank y'all, and thank you again, Chair, for allowing me the opportunity to, to, to be able to speak here. Thanks.
Appreciate you guys. Thank y'all for what y'all do. What's the name of the dog?
Sky.
Who?
Sky.
Sky. All right, thank y'all, appreciate you guys. While you're walking out, I'll ask Dean Andrews to come up to make our next presentation.
Good morning.
Morning.
To the Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Mr. President, and Chancellors, I want to thank you for this opportunity. Today is a great day for Southern University and the College of Business. We want to celebrate an individual who has made significant contributions to the College of Business in establishing our Risk Management and Insurance Program. Her name is Lillian Van Veld Gray, and she is here more or less, uh, to indicate how significant this event is in terms of what they have contributed to our program. I'd like for, uh, Dr. Ronald Jackson to come up and make the introduction.
Thank you, Dean Andrews. Good morning. It's a great day to be a Jaguar. Since the inception of the Risk Management Insurance Program, even prior to its official launch, we have been very fortunate to partner with Louisiana, the Louisiana Department of Insurance, and leading organizations such as Alliant Insurance. These collaborations have provided essential guidance and financial support, including four hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the Louisiana Department of Insurance and one point four million dollars from the Alliant Insurance Foundation. And most recently, AIF has funded twenty scholarships to our initial cohort of RIM learners, to the tune of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. At the center of this work is Ms. Lillian Van Veld Gray, Senior Vice President and Chief Belonging and Engagement Officer at Alliant Insurance Services, and Lillian also serves as Board Chair of the Alliant Insurance Foundation. With more than thirty-five years of experience, Lillian has been instrumental in advancing student talent pipelines at HBCUs and HSI institutions, expanding mentorships and career pathways, and fostering a culture of belonging across the insurance industry. I would be remiss if I did not ask Chancellor Pierre to assist me with this award this morning. Chancellor Pierre has been a champion, an ambassador, and a strategic voice for the Southern University Risk Management and Insurance Program and its official launch this semester. Let's give Chancellor Pierre a hand for working with us. It is our honor to present this award to Lillian in recognition of her outstanding leadership, philanthropic support of the Southern University Risk Management and Insurance Program. Chancellor Pierre.
Great. Thank you for all that you have done, you've enriched the lives of our students. It's not just the money, but the experiential learning opportunities that you have given to our Southern University students. When I was at the Law Center, two of my law students got to be part of that whole, uh, experience, and they raved about it and enriched their lives, and you have other students from Baton Rouge Campus College of Business, and more importantly, you're preparing them for transformational career opportunities, and we thank you very, very much, and we hope this token of appreciation really warms your heart, because we love what you have done for us and our students at Southern University.
Oh, thank you. I can say something? Um, good morning, everyone. My name is Lillian Van Veld Gray, and I think, I, I remember a few of you from about three years ago when I came and I had my big check, and I was really excited, um, to be able to do something. And I talked then about my legacy and what I wanted to leave, I have a little bit of story. But I'm here today to thank you. I'm here to thank the board, um, the SU system, Professor, Dr. This man here, Mr. Pierre, when I started working through it, and I got an opportunity to meet him, we were talking through issues, and he said, oh, okay, I don't see a problem, let's just get it done. And we're getting it done. I would like to thank Avalos, because I'm a little nervous. How could I forget this? Dean Andrews. We came to the university, and we sought out Southern University, uh, as an organization. As a little bit of background, Alliant Insurance Services is the fifth largest brokerage company in the world. We are the largest privately-held brokerage company in the world. And with that, we are now celebrating our one of the year. We're in California, we started in California, we have offices in every state, and we have an office here in Baton Rouge. My colleague, Mike Tucker, who is an alumni of Southern University, came to us and said, this institution is amazing, and they're doing amazing things. I'm a graduate, they're doing some courses on risk management, and you guys need to partner with them, we need to do something. And Mike was really, really, um, forceful about us joining with you. And we said, huh, they're working with the Department of Insurance, that says something. They understand insurance, that says something. And at the time, and still, you all will be pleased to know that the Southern University is the first HBCU to have a Risk Management and Insurance Certification Program. Mike then introduced me to Professor Pittman, maybe Professor Pitbull, don't know. Um, but Professor Pittman has single-handedly, we were talking to another gentleman earlier, carried this program on his shoulders and on his back, from his relationship with the Department of Insurance and all the things that he had. He brought the program here, he made people aware of it, and he sought out partnerships, and he sought us out. He then went to Dr. G, who's not here, but, Dr., oh, he's there, he's always hiding. It's like, where's Dr. G? Um, Dr. G, who then did everything he could to move things and, and, and find ways to make the program work. Our organization, um, our leadership doesn't look like you all, or like me. We're predominantly, um, predominant organization, predominantly white male, and they had an opportunity in twenty twenty-one, they took, looked around the room and said, we need to do better. We need to really do something about our representation. We're one of the largest firms, but we don't have representation internally, we don't have representation externally, and we're not in the neighborhoods where people are buying insurance from us, but we're not hiring them, and we're not partnering with them. And they called me and said, hey, you, do you want to do something a little different? I, as, as you mentioned earlier, I'm a senior executive vice president and a chief officer. I'm really proud of that, and I'm one of the few women of color in the entire industry with that title. I intend to change that, and I intend to change that with you. We are here to celebrate the launch of the program. Our goal as an organization, one, is to thank you for allowing us to be your partner, but to commit to you that our goal is to make sure that you have the best risk management program with the best staff to attract the best students, and I'm very proud to say that we have twenty graduates, twenty students coming into this program this year in scholarships. Average GPA is what? Say it with me.
Three point six.
Three point six. You're attracting some incredible students, and we're, we're proud to be a part of that. As I continue my notes, please. Um, as the first HBCU to do this, we actually got a phone call from some of your other HBCUs now, they're like, hey, 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 we want to talk to you. Um, what's going on? We, we, we want to do a little bit of that, we want some of that. Um, our commitment is to you, we're actually changing our model after working with you, because we recognize in order to make this program successful, we have to keep giving scholarships. To do that, we need to be able to fund, and so I'm tasked with raising a million dollars a year. Can't guarantee I'm gonna give you that much, but I'm really trying. I'm trying hard to raise money. Um, in doing so, we have active campaigns from our foundation, and this is our flagship program. Our goal is to have this program be our flagship program, and then being able to bring other universities on and teaching them how to follow your model. That's our overall goal. You are going to be a leader, you are a leader, and we thank you for the opportunity to partner with us. And as we move forward and with the students that we have in the program, I am, my heart is full. I spent all day yesterday, to the point where I didn't eat. I literally didn't eat yesterday, because we were going from place to place. We were meeting with, um, Southern Labs, we were meeting with Bryce and these different organizations to figure out how to attract students into the program, letting them know about what we're doing. We did this amazing video, which your students, two of your students, um, were in our internship program. It's a six-minute video, which I encourage all of you to watch, they, it was their production, we helped them with the, the production portion of it, the content is theirs, and it talks about their journey and, and what they're doing. That is instrumental in bringing students in, because they're seeing what's available in the insurance industry. When I was here last, and I'm gonna finish, when I was here last, I talked about generational wealth. I'm a cancer survivor, and I had about a two-year hiatus, um, where I had to battle cancer, and, and by the way, mammograms saved my life, for so those of you October Rest Cancer Awareness Month, please get your mammograms. But I had, um, and also men, make sure you also recognize that breast cancer, eight percent of men also, the breast cancer is men. But I was out for two years, and in that two-year period of time, I had lots of things that were happening to me, but you kind of have an opportunity to reflect on your life, and you have an opportunity to say, you know, what am I leaving behind? What have I done? And when I'm gone, because I could be gone in a couple months, when that happens, what will people say about me? My hope is that they say that I made a difference, and that I moved the needle, that I brought people into an industry and opened up opportunities, and I helped to create generational wealth. I'm doing that with you. When you talk about generational wealth, and in my world, that's what matters, it matters a lot. Insurance agencies, and people don't recognize, um, there are a few insurance brokers in the room, it's a lot of money that can be made in the world of insurance, and it's not just selling insurance, there's underwriters, there's actuaries, there's attorneys, there's law, there's every data protection analytics, we have all these departments, we brought your students, we did an internship program and said, Professor Pittman again, well, Lillian, you're gonna give us a scholarship, but gotta give them some work experience. Okay, Professor. So, we created this, uh, internship, it's over a two-month period of time, we pay the students twenty-five dollars the first year, thirty dollars the second year, thirty-five dollars the third year, we pay for their housing, all transportation, and then we do rotations within the department. All money we raise for the foundation goes directly back into the programs. Alliant donates all of their time, we have a hundred and three employees that work on the program in various capacities, we provide mentorships, and we rotate the students through all of our departments, from mergers and acquisitions, all the way to legal and HR. As a matter of fact, one of your students this year is on the HR track and is interested in joining Alliant as an HR rep next year. Our final year, we take the students, we have them go on trips with us, we have them meet with partners, we have them do mock interviews, we have them do mock presentations, we teach them financial literacy, because you're gonna make money, you know, I need to know how to not to spend it. I learned that a hard, the hard way, I'm making sure that the students now, they start with financial literacy the first year. We also teach them professional business etiquette, and we license them, so when they finish with us, they can get a job right away, and we do our efforts to also try to employ them. But as a foundation, it cannot be for our personal gain, so we partner with industry experts and other industry, um, our competitors, which is weird, and we offer them the students, and we tell the students, we have to not compete for you. Go out and we have to compete for you, and if we get the best deal and not best option for you, so be it. But we want to do it from cradle to success. And in doing so, we hope to be able to move the needle again and to build a future for your organization, and being able to attract students, because if you can tell me, I'm gonna be able to go. I, we did a presentation, and we showed the kids London and the London Eye and Buckingham Palace, and they got to go to the birthplace of insurance, Lloyds of London, they, they got, um, they went to a concert, they, they did, the underwriters there really rolled out the carpet for them, and they said, I want to, I, I, I want to go, I, I want to, I want to come to Alliant. It's been really effective. Our goal is to partner with you in the future. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
If you'll endorse me, could I let one student say something about what this scholarship has meant to them? These scholarships are like ten thousand dollars, so they're paying tuition for the students for both semesters.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Riley Rogers, I'm a freshman from Baton Rouge, Louisiana, majoring in Risk Management and Insurance with a minor in Dance, and this scholarship means a lot to me. This scholarship and this program is what brought me to Southern University and what made Southern stand out from other schools, because I did get scholarships from other schools, but this one was just different, and I had a meeting with Mr. Jackson, and he really explained to me like what this scholarship meant, what this program meant, and I think it's really important that it's here at Southern University, and I think it's gonna not only bring a lot of students to Southern, but keep a lot of students at Southern.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm so very sorry, I'm remiss. I have to say one thing, thank you to Professor Jackson, you all have an amazing gem here. This man has done everything to. You all have an amazing gem here. This man has done everything to his power at 4:00 AM in the morning and getting emails about the program, the curriculum, the students. He's amazing and I would not, could not say thank you enough. He's also my private chauffeur. Amazing guy.
Thank you.
And also I would like to say that former board member Fondale did an excellent job along with board member Lawson in terms of moving this program forward. They would call me and say, where are we at, Dean? Where is it? When are we going to make this thing launch? So if Mr. Pittman could just say one word and then we're going to get out of your way.
I'm making real short. Good morning, everyone. I want to say very briefly, right out of the military, May of 1971 is when I started my journey in the Risk Management Insurance Program. Started with Pan American Life, the Traveler's Insurance Company, the Edna Insurance Company, and Cigna Insurance Company. And one of the most wonderful things that has happened to me since that time is being at Southern University and working with a great team. Especially, I never anticipated my chancellor being on board with me who will implement this program. But he's been very instrumental in what we're trying to do every week. Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you. Entertaining motion to adjourn. Probably move the second, the special recognition committee. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, but I needed to say just a couple of words in regards to the Special Recognition Committee. I know it may appear to be a little time consuming, but when we, we talk about and think about $190,000 coming in, I think it deserves our attention and I appreciate them. I also would like to just briefly say, as far as recognition is concerned, we have, I have been asked several times to please continue the above and beyond award. It means more to some than others, but they are asking for it. I have had Dr. Tracy to communicate with both the president and with me. And we have vetted it and we are ready to continue it because each month I'm getting more and more. We would like to have the above and beyond. Also, before Ms. Dana, the past student rep left, she had vetted her situation and she divided the above and beyond and the student award because they were not quite the same and they were kind of conflicting. So it has been vetted. However, I would like to have our new board representative, student rep, to look at it and next month, let both of us be ready to do what we have to do with it. President, are you on board with that?
It's the chair's agenda and it shall be on the agenda next month.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Last thing is special recognition still. On last evening, our education department gave a really, really nice showcase for all of those that were invited. Many, they had, it was very successful. Many people came and shared and they took us on a tour of the education department. And this morning, they gave those of you who were not able, we know this was an inconvenient time for some of our board members, but they brought gifts for you that they had on last evening. And I would just like to personally thank the chancellor, the president chancellor, the Dr. Osagui and her, her staff for all of the nice, wonderful things that they shared with us. And I'm sure my chair is going to say something to them about the thank you.
Last night was an awesome event. The president was there. Ms. Smith kind of did even in conjunction with Dr. Laurie Young and it was, I think Osagui was the, is the new director of education. And promising things will emanate from that aspect of the campus. Anything else?
Thank you. That's it. Thank you.
While, while we're on recognition, I think I would be remiss if we didn't recognize yourself, president, and the rest of the Southern University system on the response from the threat that was made to our campus. And the way y'all handled it was very well put together. I think it also brought some comfort to the staff and the students, how we responded to that incident.
You know, and I think special recognition should be given to the president. His whole staff, they were, they were hunkered down. They were up here with the FBI agents and the students' safety was primitive. The president and I actually walked dormitory to dormitory, four or five of them, and met with the students to assure them that, that it was a hoax, but we were on top of it. And I particularly asked the president to walk with me. Chris Massengill, while this so-called shooter was on the campus, because he was taller than me and if the shot was going to hit him before me, he stood by it. But no, he did, he did that and he started picking up paper, trash. And so, but we walked the campus and it was, it was great and to see all of you come together under that crisis, it made us a better place. So, so thank you, sure, for that. But the president, you deserve some kudos for that, for orchestrating the safety of our university and our kids. So thank you. And Chancellor PA, he didn't walk with us, though, Donner.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll add one more to that because when things happen here at the flagship campus, that type of crisis goes throughout. And so it hits Shreveport, I'm sure as it hits the New Orleans, that's soon. So I want to thank our sheriff because even in Shreveport, he added additional coverage to the Susla campus. So when things happen, we feel it throughout the system and that's demonstrated. So sheriff, I want to thank you for taking the initiative to make sure that the Shreveport campus was protected extra as well. Thank you.
Hearing that, there's no one else to thank. I think we'll move on to.
Mr. Chairman, though, before you go, I think it is worthy to note that President Shields, I thought you represented the institution and the system very well in the interview. I saw that interview myself independently and I thought you did a phenomenal job with that. You're welcome.
I would like to thank whichever member would move to join this record. So moved by Mr. Loeb. Madam Ann Smith, can you call Academic Affairs Committee to order?
Affairs Committee is now called to order. Roll call, please.
Yes, madam. Mrs. Ann Smith.
President.
Mrs. Maple Gaines. Mrs. L. Dudley.
President.
Mr. Myron K. Lawson. Sheriff Henry Whitehorn. Attorney Tony Clayton.
I'm here.
Madam Chair, we have quorum.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have no public comments and I, in that we are airing out everything now, I would like to, I would like to again ask that at the beginning of each board meeting, if you have comments, public comments, please turn them in to our chair and he will direct them to the correct and proper committee so that when it comes time for us to ask for public comments, we don't have to, we'll have them organized. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you mind that we do that? Okay. No public comments today. At this time, I'll take adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
It has been moved and, and seconded that the agenda is adopted. Action items, we have two today. The first one is request for approval, justification for the 2025, 2026 Southern University Laboratory Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. And in that, we have our director here from Southern Lab. I would like for you to come to the platform and, and if there are any questions about the handbook, you'll take them at this time or you can give a brief summary.
All right. Good morning, Chair Clayton, our President Shields, members of the board. This is our handbook that is, that governs expectations for our students and families at the laboratory school campus. The handbook must be updated yearly. Once the state legislature passes laws, Betsy and the Louisiana State Department of Education synthesize those laws and pass them down to each LEA, which the laboratory school is an LEA. And so basically what we're doing this year is updating our handbook accordingly. Real quick, we've updated our tuition and seat deposit policy, some legislative alignment relative to expulsions for campuses that reduces the number of semesters from four to two, a formal revocation process and with the advancement of artificial intelligence, we've updated that with our academic integrity policy and that pretty much concludes our changes for this year's handbook.
Thank you, Mr. Bristol. Do we have any comments or questions? If not, no question. If not, I'd like to get a motion.
So, second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any opposition? Motion carries. B, reentry education and training program, and this comes from Southern University of Shreveport. Dr. Gant, excuse me, please, if you have any concerns, questions or a brief summary, please.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Smith. To Chairman Clayton, Vice Chairman Abraham, President Shields, members of this honorable board. On behalf of Southern University at Shreveport in the Caddo Parish Sheriff's Office, under the leadership of Sheriff Henry Whitehorn, I am honored to bring before you a transformative partnership that stands to make a lasting impact on our community and region. Susla is prepared to formally launch a collaborative reentry and education program in partnership with the Caddo Parish Sheriff's Office. This initiative has been thoughtfully developed through ongoing dialogue and planning between Susla representatives and the Caddo Parish Sheriff's Office. Together, we have outlined a strategic approach that leverages education and workforce training to address two critical societal needs, reducing recidivism and filling workforce gaps in our local economy. This program will provide justice-involved individuals with access to academic coursework, industry-based certifications and career readiness training, all designed to support the successful reentry, long-term employment and a pathway to a more stable future. We believe education is the cornerstone of rehabilitation and workforce development is the bridge to economic opportunity. This partnership's effect are an institutional mission of serving the underserved and it aligns with national best practices in reentry programming. We respectfully ask your kind support and formal approval of this partnership. With the board's endorsement, Susla can begin this vital work in full collaboration with the Caddo Sheriff's Office, advancing both educational equity and community reinvestment. Sheriff Whitehorn, would you like to add anything to that statement?
That I need to add, other than the fact that we're talking about returning citizens. You know, we want to classify folks sometimes as convicts or formerly incarcerated, leave the returning citizen, that we are mindful that we have to prepare to be successful when they do return to our communities. And working with Southern University is going to give us a better opportunity to address those needs and prepare individuals for successful outcomes. And so I just would hope that the board would agree with us and support.
Thank you. Do we have questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I have additional comments. I had an opportunity to speak to Sheriff and also Chancellor Gant. I'm in full support of the program. I have a little deeper insight on it in my day job. I serve as Director of Economic Development for the Port Caddo Bosier. And collectively, that's 2,000 employees between our tenants and we have tenant needing. So Sheriff's staff came out to present the program and it was very well received. And from the perspective of workforce and the demands of workforce in particular categories, it's an opportunity for those to not view those clients, the clients that's presenting a program as returning citizens. So care should be given in communicating and what the program is about and minimizing some of the watchouts in view of having to create meaningful jobs for people reentering the workforce. So I just want to offer that those meetings went very well. Mr. Aaron is here. He was presented. Thank you, Aaron, for working with our tenants at the port. So I've seen it from the other side and it was very well received and I fully support it and look forward to the training that Susla can offer and extend to the program.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Any opposition? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Informational item, presentation and international affair and and university outreach students, we will now recognize Dr. Barbara Carpenter. Good morning. Good morning. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, President. We've, I've been asked to, I'm a little bit taller than the young man that gave the pledge of allegiance, so I think you can see me. Marcus, where are you? We've been asked to. Good. I asked Marcus to give you a brief idea of what we have available for our international students who come to Southern University. That's just one of the greetings that we have. That was in Portuguese. We have them in other languages. And so we tried to make it so that people who are trying to come to this university can have a greetings in their native language so that they can have a general idea of what we're about, what we have to offer and something about Southern University. And so that is one of the languages that you probably can find on the website. Sometimes it's difficult for students to navigate our site, but anyway, if they keep clicking and clicking and clicking, they will ultimately find a greeting that they will understand. I've had the members to pass out a glossary of terms that we normally work with every day. I'm not sure. Tracy, did you, did you give it out? Thank you very much. First of all, let me introduce my staff. These are the people of whom the international students have a first glimpse of what we're about. So my staff members, would you stand, please? We're a very small group, but we are powerful. I have the assistant dean who's going to serve as a clicker with our PowerPoint. Okay, you want me to just do it that way? Dr. Gatson, assistant dean, Dr. Carroll, newly earned PhD from LSU, what, last month or so? Administrative assistant, Mrs. Robbins, and of course, the newest addition to our staff, Mr. Kermit Johnson, the fourth. So what we have are people who work closely with people who are coming. So as I talk to you, I'm not sure if you will understand all of the terms. Thus, we've given you a glossary of terms that we work with on a daily basis with our students. So you hear the administration with Elon Musk and all of the rest of those people talk about mainly DSH and CIVIS and all of that. Now you understand what they're talking about because we've given you the definitions that you need. Let's go with the next slide, Marcus, please. This is our staff. These are the positions that they hold. What is a PDSO? I'm the responsible officer. The responsible officer is the person who is responsible for everything international on this campus. I supervise these people who are the people who are the principal designated school officials. That's the PDSO. Everybody in my office has to be Department of State trained. That's the PDSO. Everybody in my office has to be Department of State trained. We have to have classes. We have to have workshops. We have to be on target all of the time, 24/7. And so these people, we have them in Shreveport Campus, the SUNO Campus, and this is a part of the consolidation effort, uh, to be sure that Southern University has pulled everything together. There's been tremendous turnover in the SUNO Campus. So we've had to send my people down there to work with them to be sure that they're in compliance, that the students who come are able to get into their classes. The faculty members are able to provide the courses that they need. The one thing that you might need to understand is that international students must take a full load, at least 12 hours, and only one of those classes can be online. So if the university does not offer enough face-to-face classes, these students ultimately have to transfer to another university or cross-register with another university to be sure that they're in compliance. On top of that, we have to have the fees paid for reinstatement annually. Those fees start at $4,000. Uh, one of the fees, the other fee is about $2,000. All of that has to be paid through the pay.gov portal with a credit card, which means I, as the director, have to pay that fee for the universities to be in compliance and like to get my money back. But anyway, it has to be done and we have to do it in order for Southern University to operate as it should. Next slide, please. I'm gonna skip through some of these. Many of you have been asking about numbers. Let me explain to you about the numbers chart that you see before you. This is the consolidated list which shows the current numbers present today. So you find the numbers in the green are the face-to-face numbers of courses. The other numbers are OPT. If you'll notice on your glossary, what does OPT mean? It means that these students are with optional training. They are required to consider, consider, continue, rather, their training opportunities once they finish the program. So those are added numbers. Then you have those who are in the STEM disciplines specifically. So when you add up the numbers of students that our staff have to function with, be sure they're in compliance, check in with, they have to check in with us. We check in with them on a monthly basis. You have a total of about 462 numbers. Total. That's Southern University Baton Rouge Land Mass, which includes the law and ag centers. And then you have the other two campuses as well. Next slide, please. That's just the operation. You really can't see that of how a student gets to Southern University. Want to stop?
Question.
Question? Yes, sir.
And Ms., Ms., um, Ms. Carpenter, I would rather, let's just do the questions and find out what the concerns are from the Board, Board member.
Certainly.
Thank you. Good morning, uh, Dr. Carpenter.
Good morning.
To the, to the number slide because those numbers are different with the report that I received that dates back to 2017. I requested the presentation. Uh, I was intrigued by last month's presentation about the trip and.
About what?
The trip that was presented at the, at our, at our meeting last month.
You're talking about the trip to Ghana that the College of Business? Yes.
And in looking at the data that we received, it seemed like a seesaw in terms of, from system and campus in terms of enrollment. And I don't have a good frame of reference and the numbers seem low. And I want to know whether or not these numbers today are reflective of the historical trends in this program or are these numbers indeed low?
When you say historical?
Yes.
We're talking from 21 to 25?
Well, the report that I have goes all the way back to 2017.
Not necessarily. Understand that the current president has, how shall I put it, other than just tell you, has pretty much eliminated much of the work that the embassies do in other parts of the world. First of all, in order for a student to be able to come, and this is just not Southern University. This is nationwide. So in order for a student to come into this country, the student fills out the application, sends it to admissions. That's the first step.
Well, when you say current president, well, you got stopping from moving.
Not, not.
Not him, okay?
I'm, I'm talking, no, no, no. I'm talking about Donald Trump. That president.
And I, and I, and I get that. I, I know.
Uh, let, let me, let me explain to you what the process is for the student to come and that will help you understand.
And I, and I have a, I have a frame of reference of the process because I read, read it before today's meeting.
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. And, and I know the chairman has a plane to catch, which is why he's nervous over here for us to get, get through this. Get through this process. I, I guess, and I do understand that this current administration has sort of frustrated, uh, international students enrolling in colleges and universities with a lot that's going on. But when you look at the data, it predates this administration in terms of the up and down seesaw in the program. And I guess my question is, is there a plan that your department has on how we're going to mitigate the current environment? One. Two, in, in your experience, where are these students who are, for lack of a better word, low-hanging fruit that you, that we should be focused on and recruiting to come to Southern to increase these numbers?
Well, we recruit from all over the world. That's the first step. The low-hanging fruit, I couldn't answer that for you except for the fact that at one time we had a large number of students from one particular country. That pretty much stopped because of internal changes within the university, not to my doing. The person who was responsible for helping to recruit those students decided that they were not going to do that anymore because he was not happy with some changes the administration made. And he said so.
All right. And so is there a plan going forward that your office operates under or pursuant to on specific recruiting, uh, uh, strategies to, to get more international students into the system?
Absolutely. There is a plan to do that. Uh, given that we understand that we do not have a budget in international affairs. So we operate from other sources of self-generated funds through another program. There is no budget for international programs.
May I ask for that you would provide the Board a copy of the plan that you have?
Pardon?
May I ask that you provide the Board with a copy of the plan that you have, the recruiting plan?
I can do that, yes, certainly.
Uh, one, one other question, uh, Ms. Chairman, and I'll be done. I know you, you, you're anxious. But, um, one other area that's a concern to me, uh, and I believe that you serve as Dean of Continuing Education.
I do.
And can you tell me what continuing education courses we offer and the number of students that we have in them?
I could not tell you that, sir, and I will tell you why. Previously, if you will recall, we had the evening and weekend school where we had more than 50 courses, starting at five o'clock on Friday, going all day Saturday, and sometimes on Sunday. With a change in administration again, the deans decided that they wanted those courses within their colleges and no longer offered through continuing education. Thus, those courses were handed to the deans. They provided the courses at prime time, nine to 12 o'clock. If a person is working a 40-hour a week, a non-traditional student, he certainly cannot come to a class between nine and 12 o'clock in the day. Thus, the courses did not make for those students. Those students were not readily accommodated. They went to other universities. I no longer have the evening and weekend program, other and even, even the online program that we had one time started. So there are plans to reintroduce that program to the university starting in the spring of this year, hoping that we can recapture some of the non-traditional students that we one time were able to serve properly.
Wow, that's interesting. Uh, so I want to direct this comment to the President and to all Chancellors. Uh, the continuing education market in the United States of America in 2024 exceeded $60 billion.
Correct.
Sixty-six.
That is correct.
It's projected to grow to $90 billion by 2030. That's a lot of revenue and the lion's share of that revenue is generated by colleges and universities. Now, you have, uh, a, a large number of professions that have, uh, industry-based, uh, organizations like the Baton Rouge Bar Association who does its own CLA. But the overwhelming majority of that revenue goes to universities. And we're not even in the game. I just don't under, I just cannot get my head around that. And I understand what you're saying, that this was a decision made by somebody else that you continue to have the title, but not the responsibility, which should never happen. But we need to put our best and brightest thinking about how, particularly as a resource-challenged institution, that we would not be focused on this. I just don't, I don't know how, I don't know how you can, I don't know how we can even have such a conversation in 2025.
May I share something with you, Ms., Ms., Mr. Board Member? We were on par with Northwestern. Northwestern has cornered the market with continuing education program at Northwestern, North Louisiana, absolutely. But that's not our fault that, uh, those decisions were made beyond me. We focus our entrances now on, uh, continuing education units that we work with various organizations providing CEUs for them. Beyond that, uh, and that's a pretty growing institution as well. But when you ask me for numbers, we don't register them. We at one time had the quick admit process because a non-traditional student who comes in is not going to have to go through all of the things that a freshman student has to go to, to enter the university. We had the non, the quick admit process, put them in, put them in a class. If you had a McDonald's, you wanted to learn something about business management, you could take a course to help you do that and move on. You're not getting a degree. We did all of that, but that was beyond my purview.
Madam Chair.
May I, uh, may I, uh, state? Okay, thank you. And I'm going to ask our Chair if we can maybe put this in our task force and it'll be something for us to address.
Be a good idea.
Vice Chair?
And I'll do that.
Okay, we'll do that. Have one other comment and then we'll go.
Very quickly, I've been asked over and over again about back book. Online education. Teaching education, we can't get it off at this point. We are missing an opportunity in our backyard where I live. And she is correct. Offer is correct. Western is doing a phenomenal job. I would go to university for many years, somewhere or another. We lost our way. We have got to do better. LSU ain't, and I say this over and over again. Had a record number on line.
Correct.
Our numbers are just. I'm looking for response. I had to, Board should look for response. And this.
I'll make, I'll make it a point at the next Board meeting, give you update on our analysis, what's going on.
And, and Chair, I, I'll comment too. Mr. Rutledge, I, I, I fully see what I, what's going on. And the Chancellor and the President, this must be addressed. It's, it's, it just doesn't make sense. But with that, Madam, uh, Smith, we'll go back to you. We'll have it on the agenda to discuss it further and, uh, and the two of you just have to give us an answer for it.
Thank you. And, and, oh, oh, that's right.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, I cannot let this subject go by with, uh, not lending my voice to my fellow colleague, Mr. Rutledge and Mr. Lawson. You, you happened to touch on something that I'm, uh, keenly aware of and you've captured my attention on this. Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate you putting this, uh, on the agenda. This is definitely worth drilling down into. Uh, just as a, a point of reference, as we sit here today in the state of Louisiana, there are 114,000 job openings. I would encourage not just the Baton Rouge campus, but every campus look at this as a strategy because the reality is, is that the majority of those current openings require stackable credentials and not a four-year degree.
Correct.
And we are missing a valuable opportunity to be leading in a space with a constituency that absolutely has an opportunity to exceed, which is why I'm also, Sheriff, so excited about your re-entry program. Uh, these programs work. The research is conclusive on that and we need it. And for economic development, this is very important. Over the last 18 months, Governor Landry's administration has announced over $7 billion of new capital investment in this state, along with 7,000 new jobs that's coming. We gotta be prepared for that. This is an institution and a system that can do that with incredible programs. Not only is it worth having a conversation why you don't have a budget as it relates to international affairs, but this other issue about the continuing education is, I'm glad that we're touching it. I want to be involved in that conversation. Thank you for bringing it, uh, to light here today and you've captured my attention. Thank you, Madam Dean. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair? Thank you for your comments and thank you for your presentation, Dr. Carpenter. And I'm looking at one other hand. If you will, quickly, we, we run out of time.
Real quickly, just to emphasize a sense of urgency, uh, Brother Lawson mentioned North Louisiana, Alexandria, yeah, and at the other colleges, two-year colleges, technical colleges have it. We get calls, I get calls for instructors for continuing ed courses.
Yeah.
From the port, all the time. They have the people, they need the instructors, and I just can connect them with the vendor, with our, uh, tenant base at the port for these courses. This is a Bozier Parish Community College, L- LSU S. It's a market that everybody, if we want to play in it, we have to have a sense of urgency about it. I just wanted to add that to the discussion.
Madam Chair, may I say one other thing, please?
Sure.
Uh, I could not let this moment pass without, uh, saying to the Board, I, I really do appreciate your concern, but understand that it will take finances to make it happen. There will have to be cooperation in the manner in which we know it to be. For instance, the bookstore has to be open at certain times to accommodate people if you want them on your campus after hours. There are other things that have to be.
Take a deep dive on it at the next meeting. We're gonna address all of those.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, uh, and thanks again. There are some other comments that we're gonna put on hold until next meeting and next meeting we'll have you back. Thank you for your information.
You're quite welcome anytime.
Okay. Now, at this time, I'd like to, uh, have a motion to adjourn.
Set.
It has been moved and second. It has been moved in second. Um, Academic Affairs Committee, adjourn.
Next, I call on the Honorable Donald Ray for to call to order the Facility and Property Committee.
Yes, sir. Mr. Donald Ray Henry.
Present.
Ms. Maple Gaines. Mrs. L. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Chris Massingale. Mr. Paul Matthews. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge.
Here.
Attorney Edwin Shorty.
He's here.
Mrs. Ann Smith.
Present.
Dr. Ronnie Whitfield.
Present.
Attorney Tony Clayton.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Members of the committee, I'd like to have a favorable motion to accept the agenda with the exception of changing five B to an action item.
Five B?
Five B.
So moved?
Been moved?
Oh, but we haven't adopted.
From, from information to action.
We haven't adopted it yet.
Exactly what we want to do. Well, we want to do a unanimous, uh, change to the, uh, agenda so we can accept this as an action item.
What I think before you move forward.
Okay.
We gotta make sure that we don't look for.
The whole, the, let me ask you this. We want Mr. Dawson to be able to present the entire capital outlay and, and, uh, approve the, well, wait, wait, wait. Mr. Dawson, would you please explain?
Yes, sir.
Give me a second.
This is what we normally do every year. This, this basically are the projects that we would be submitting to Board of Regents that will be going forward with our request for capital outlay projects coming up in the next session. Basically has to come through this, to the committee, has to be approved. We then submit that to Board of Regents, and then it moves on.
So on item three, as a member of this committee, I'll move to, uh, add to the agenda, uh, item five B as an action item and request that this agenda be adopted. It has to be unanimous and call a vote on that. And the action item is that he be allowed to, uh, provide or submit his entire request to the, uh, so we giving him the authority to submit his request.
Bottom line, yeah. Roll call. So we have a motion, roll call vote. We have a motion to adopt it. Do we have a second?
We have a second?
We have a second, roll call.
Mr. Donald Ray Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Maple Gaines. Mrs. L. Dudley.
Yes.
Mr. Chris Massingale. Mr. Paul Matthews. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge. Attorney Edwin Shorty.
Yes.
Mrs. Ann Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Ronnie Whitfield.
Yes.
Attorney Tony Clayton.
Absolutely.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. At this time, we will entertain any public comments? Do we have any public?
Adopt the, adopt the agenda.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's been properly moved in second, all in favor?
Aight.
Ayes, in opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we entertain public comments. Any public comments? Seeing that there's none, at this time, we're gonna have Mr. Dawson, who really confused me a little bit.
Sorry.
But I learned this after the meeting.
Sir, sir Donald, what are we calling this? Action item five, well, now is.
Right now, right now, we, right now, we're just do, we're just do the facility update, then I'll go to the action item, uh, for favorable vote.
Okay.
Before he does the, uh, uh, the, uh, information, uh, I just wanted you to take note of our vision that we have with our road. Please do not throw it away, keep it before you because we do expect this to come to fruition sooner than we expect. We've been working on it. We had conversation with the Congressman, and I think we're gonna stay on top of this. Mr. Dawson is going to, uh, talk about the ravine and some of the updates we have, Mr. Dawson.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Chairman, Vice Chair, and also Chair Facility Committee in this illustrious board. I will be brief, uh, we're gonna move pretty quickly. Um, I think everyone saw the great work that's being done over at Kernan Lake. I mean, that, that has really improved drastically. We want to thank, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Wade, who has his staff been doing a great job on that, and as well as the support from Desiree Honore Thomas in doing so, so you can see that. Another brief update, because I know there was some issue about the leaking over at the Clark Activity Center. Uh, last time, there was a call that was broken, but there were a couple of other issues. Basically, because of the chair water piping in that building, that basically insulation start peeling away, warm air hit cold piping, you have condensation. Um, they are fixing some of that now, which is the more, most, more strenuous problems. The goal was to go back with deferred maintenance and go through the whole building and take care of all of that. So if we have funding in our next session for deferred maintenance, that's one of the major projects that, uh, that we are doing. I was gonna show some brief slides, but I'm not today. I'm gonna wait until next, next week to do so. But one thing that I want to do, and I wanted to present, uh, the President, basically, and I talked a couple of years ago, and we have, uh, a utility master plan that we've been doing here on campus. And I wanted to show some, some things to the, to the benefit of that utility master plan. For the sake of time, I won't do it today, that's all right with you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we'll go through it next time. But it does show one particular thing that was found. I think at one meeting, that was an issue with, with, uh, backup at, at, at the Clark Activity Center during the event. I think that Chairman Clayton made it very clear that he wanted to see something done there. Uh, but, uh, so what we did, through this process of doing that, we found a pipe that had nothing but roots that had grown into the pipe that really prevented fault. When that was cleaned out, we haven't had one more issue that we talked about dealing with that particular issue at the, at the, uh, Activity Center. Those kind of things are what we're doing. I'll have a more detailed presentation for you next time with some, uh, videos so that you can see how that's moving, okay? Um, that's my kind of update. We can go through the next. Oh, one other thing I want to say, we did have a ribbon cutting, now we got groundbreaking over at, at, uh, Susilla. It was a very well-attended event. We, we had to cancel the groundbreaking at Suno on the new nursing, nursing school because of the events that happened here, uh, last Thursday. So I think that's scheduled for next Friday, the twenty-ninth. So you'll be getting more information on that. One other thing, the Board of Regents is coming to the campus. They have expressed an interest in really coming to visit this campus. So October fourteenth is the initial date that they're talking about. More of the details and planning are upcoming. So we are definitely going to, uh, have them here. They are very excited about being here. That's my initial update, uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I, I.
Mr. Donald Ray.
Yes, sir.
Rev. Um, wanna comment on that lake? The lake looks great. Uh, looks like you guys dredged it, and I don't know if you guys take a chance passing, look at our lake, it's beautiful. And I understand next you guys got thirty-some million dollars to fix this ravine.
Yes, sir.
Aesthetically, that's gonna change the whole game plan on this university. Uh, you and Reverend Donald Ray Henry are doing a great job with our facilities, and, and you can see the difference since the two of y'all have been, uh, in charge of it. And I, I just want to personally thank, uh, you guys for staying on top of all these issues. Thank you, Rev.
Thank you, sir.
And the road, it has passed Congress for the, I think, almost a million dollars for the study of the road. It's waiting passage of the Senate, and then they'll put together the study of the plans and how to draw it and all that. Then we'll have to get the funding. But, uh, you were in, you and, you know, it's gonna be called Shields, uh.
If I'm still here to be creating through way.
But Reverend Henry and, and, and Mr. Rutledge were in DC last week, or the week before, they had a meeting with the Congressman, and I think this issue may or may not have come up. But thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for action item five B.
Second.
It's been moved in second, uh, roll call. We don't need a roll call?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aight.
Ayes. Any other business?
I move that we'll adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aight.
Mr. Myron K. Lawson, the Honorable Man from Shreve, I mean Alexandria, Mr. Lawson.
I just, I watch yourself.
All together, Finance Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, call to order the Finance Committee, roll call, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Mr. Myron K. Lawson.
Present.
Mrs. Ann Smith. Mr. Reggie Abraham.
Here.
Attorney Quincy Cawthorn. Mrs. L. Dudley.
Present.
Mrs. Maple Gaines. Mr. Chris Massingale. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge. Attorney Tony Clayton.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Item number three, adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as printed? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
So moved.
Moved by Chair, probably seconded by Vice Chair. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aight.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number four, public comments, or any public comments relative to the agenda as adopted. Seeing number one, approach the podium, we'll go to item number five, action, uh, items. Uh, mostly informational items, actually, but we'll do, uh, item six A, interim financial report. I'll yield to our, uh, Vice President of Finance, uh, Mr. Flanders McLean.
Morning. The interim financial reports are in your packet. Uh, I have gone over the reports, and each campus, uh, for the month of August is actually reporting, uh, self-generated, an exit, a positive figure of, uh, self-generated revenues, which means that the revenues that are shown here are higher than what the original budget was. I can, uh, I can go through them, but what it means apparently enrollment is up on each campus. For example, the Baton Rouge campus is showing a million eighty-three thousand, two eighty-two, and, uh, self-generated revenues increase over budget. The Law Center is three hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and seven dollars increased over budget. The New Orleans campus is eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, two forty-four above budget. And the, uh, Shreveport campus is breaking even. And as you know, the boarding system, we do not have self-generated revenues, uh, nor do the Ag Center. So at this point, all campuses are showing that they will have a balanced budget, that's their projection now. But I'm certain some campuses are still registering, and we also, as you know, have the, uh, spring semester revenue coming in, so this number could change. But that's, that's the, uh, report I have to date.
Okay, Mr.
For the month of August.
Okay, Mr. McLean, thank you for that report. Uh, now, many board members like Attorney Rutledge are particular about detail, so Mr. wishes this board, uh, Mr. McLean can read each line item, uh, word by word. Are you interested in that, uh, Mr. Rutledge? Okay, then. If not, any other questions on the interim financial report? Yes, sir. Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. McLean.
Yes, sir.
Projection you can talk about? Is it, that's the question. Is it a projection or is it actual? Terms of the number, uh, enrollment, is that an actual number, uh, that is a projection based on?
Okay, based, I'm sorry, based on the, based on the information I have, if you notice the report, the report allows for a projection. And the campuses, for example, the Baton Rouge campus, they are adjusting, so they're not, they have, they have made an adjustment, which means that their enrollment, the numbers are higher, but they adjusted back to determine the amount they think it's gonna really be because they are still registered students. So they adjusted their number. For the, uh, for the Law Center, there are no projections. So apparently, they are saying those numbers are actual. For the New Orleans campus, they are saying there are no projections. And for the Shreveport campus, there are no projections. So the other campus taking projections really is bad.
That was my question.
Yes, sir.
Chancellor Pierre, is that your projection number? How do you base that? Based that upon previous three years enrollment or, like, how do you base that?
So what we do is, on a daily basis, we have a three-year, uh, comparison. So we compare since the bench twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five fall by day. And what we do, particularly since twenty-three, because the COVID Monday went away, ba- basically base it on paid, paid students. Because we cannot rely on anything else but paid students. And that number key, you know, obviously, we do it on a daily basis, so we know what we are. And the numbers, obviously, in the month of August that are being reflected, reflected what was there. Since then, there have been a number of additional paid students, and we provide that report to the President every day, so he knows what we are and where we're going.
So you're saying that you don't count in not paid students?
Not, not, not for no certain.
That would be full accounting, false accounting, wouldn't it?
Well, it would not truly be as transparent as I think the board would want it to be.
Thank you, thank you.
One, one comment is that. Can I make a comment, Mr.?
McLean, yes.
The, the report allows for unpaid students, which means that when you make your projection, you actually, your actual column says this is the number of students that are paid. And then if you have students that you are continuing to register, you know how many classes, you know what schedules you have out there. You project the number of students that you would have going forward. So if you look at the projected column, that says to us that what? That you do have additional students that you're registering, and you expect those numbers to come in. And, uh, now, not to say that they don't have any, the schools that don't have any numbers. If they allow a few students to come in, that number will be adjusted into the actual stormfall.
So based on what, uh, I see and what I hear, all the campuses have met their projections when it comes to paid students, is that correct?
That's correct, based on this report.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion on item number seven. Any other business? Item number eight?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Massingale, seconded by Chair. Considers adjournment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I call Mr. Rutledge to call the Legal Affairs Committee into order.
Yes, sir. Attorney Quincy Cawthorn. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge. Mrs. Maple, Mrs. Maple Gaines. Mr. Aaron Manzi. Attorney Edwin Shorty. Sheriff Henry Whitehorn. Attorney Tony Clayton.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Are there any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, we'll go now to action items five A, B, and C.
I move you pass them in global, Mr. Chairman.
Has it been motioned by Chairman Clayton, seconded by Mr. Whitehorn? Any questions about any item? Any questions about either item? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Done. Thank you.
State University Board of Supervisors is now, meeting is now called to order. Uh, Mr. President, would you do a roll call vote of all of, uh, members in attendance?
Yes, sir. Attorney Tony Clayton.
Here.
Mr. Reggie Abraham.
Here.
Attorney Quincy Cawthorn. Mrs. L. Dudley. Mrs. Maple Gaines. Mr. Donald Ray Henry. Mr. Myron K. Lawson. Mr. Aaron Manzi. Mr. Chris Massingale. Mr. Paul Matthews. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge. Attorney Edwin Shorty. Mrs. Ann Smith. Reverend Dr. Samuel Tolbert. Dr. Ronnie Whitfield. Sheriff Henry Whitehorn. Mr. Chairman, we have quorum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll, uh, entertain any modifications to the agenda. Hearing none, I'll move that, uh, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda as printed. Moved by Dr. Whitfield, seconded by Reverend Henry. All in favor of the agenda, say aye. Any opposition, hearing none, that agenda motion has been, uh, adopted. Any public comments remain to anything on this agenda? Seeing no one come forward, I'll move to resolutions. Uh, Ms. Rochelle?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. On behalf of the Southern University System and this honorable board, I would like to extend condolences, condolences to the following families. The family of Mister James Mitchell Tate. Mister Tate is the brother of Miss Janine Tate, Director of Communications for the Southern University System and the Baton Rouge Campus. Mister Tate passed away on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. The family of Mister Matthew Tate. Mister Tate is, uh, was an avid hunter, fisherman, educator, politician, counselor, and expert tax preparer. Most of all, he was a Southernight who received his Bachelor of Science in Education and a Master of Education in Supervision and Administration. He passed away on September second, twenty twenty-five. And that concludes our resolutions.
Next, um, action items six A and B. Moved by Maple, Miss Maple Gaines, seconded by Miss Ann Smith, that we approve these items in global. Um, all in favor, aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, action items six A and B are, uh, approved. Informational item, one second, my vice chair. Uh, informational item, presidential report.
So we kind of glossed over, uh, I think, something that's significant now that we're fully into the academic, uh, year. There, there's a remarkable, uh, thing happening across the system, you, and, and it's visual. You see the, uh, Welcome Center that's going up. You see the, uh, outdoor auditorium up, the new police station's almost done. The, the, uh, the STEM building's underway. Uh, by this time, hopefully next month, we will have completed the deferred maintenance on the Jazz Clark Building. Uh, we know there's a groundbreaking, uh, in New Orleans, uh, for the nursing building. We have the physical education facility, uh, and I, I, I would be remiss if I didn't remark that a lot of this is happening directly through the diligence of Ken Dawson over the last four years and the hard work that the, the, the foundation and this board did before that to line up these projects moving along. I, I can't tell you how many times I bump into people who come to campus and say, oh, it's incredible what's happening. It, it's, it's, uh, I think important to congratulate this board, uh, the system, facility staff, and everybody that's participated in, in, in those, uh, activities. It's over three hundred million dollars that's in the, it's either on its way and it's gonna get, there's more things, there's business school, there's remodel of the nursing school, there's the new lab school. Uh, there's, there's just a lot of things that, that, that are in fact going to happen. Uh, and that's a tribute to this whole system. I, I think given the events of last week, um, it, it's important for us to focus on campus security and safety. We've already made some changes. Um, uh, there will be a, 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 a uniformed police officer at the security gate on this campus. I want to recognize Chancellor Gant and Chancellor Bowie because as soon as the threat came through here on Baton Rouge Campus, I called them and as, as Supervisor Dudley remarked, uh, uh, folks in Shreveport stepped up big time right away. Uh, and I, I know there was a similar effort on the New Orleans campus, but we must be diligent. Uh, on Tuesday, uh, the Speaker of the House, uh, was on campus and thanks for everybody participating in that. We drove him around and tried to point out some of the things that, uh, we need. We need to rethink our security booth at the main campus, at the, the main entrance here on, uh, on Harding. I'd like to see that widened. I'd like us to use technology for those people who work and are students here, that they can go through a gate if they have the appropriate sticker on their card. Uh, uh, I want more barriers, et cetera, so we were talking through that. Uh, we're gonna be writing grants to add even more cameras to all of the barriers. So I want to assure this board that, uh, we're taking, uh, safety and security of the students and the people on this campus, uh, very seriously. Uh, earlier this week, I participated, uh, with the other system presidents, the Anti-Hazing Task Force, the Caleb Wilson Anti-Hazing Task Force, that, uh, legislators and others are, are moving forward. Um, the finance report glossed over sort of, uh, something I'd wa- I'd like to give some recognition to. Uh, the reason why there's po- there's positive balances, uh, and projections on all these campuses, all hard work of our enrollment management people, the chancellors and leadership chancellors given. Uh, this is the first time in my tenure here that, uh, every campus has, uh, achieved their enrollment target with paid students. Uh, if you see, uh, our chancellors walking around with a limp, um, it's because every week I ask them about the enrollment. Um, and, uh, I always ask them, are you gonna hit your enrollment target that you set your budget at? Uh, and, uh, they're, they're a little tired of me, uh, giving them grief about that, but they've hit it. Uh, earlier this week, uh, is part of my stewards of place, uh, interest. There's, there's an organization here in, uh, Baton Rouge, Together Baton Rouge. It's grassroots organization that gets out in the neighborhoods. One of the things that they try to do is make sure our energy provider, who's supposed to make sure there's lighting on all these streets, are following through on that, providing emergency, uh, uh, places for people who have in, in the heat or in storms, that they get food and shelter. Uh, we had, uh, our student representatives engaged there and I made a commitment on the part of, of Southern U University to be actively engaged. In addition, that the, uh, annual board meeting of the Baton Rouge Area Chamber, uh, uh, annual meeting took place. I, I participated in there with the business leaders from across the, the city. They have some exciting things going on. Uh, so those relationships continue to, to go, uh, well. With that, uh, I will pause and leave a little time for my, uh, colleagues, uh, the other, uh, the chancellors of the system to make their report. Certainly happy to take any questions. I will note that this, uh, that this opportunity for, uh, uh, online, uh, adult education is something we gotta actually pivot and really take a hard look and move pretty quickly to address it. I, I will take that bullet.
Does appear that you've taken up most of the chancellor's report time, but we'll see how they respond accordingly, knowing that Mister Massengill has to drive all the way to, uh, coming to this. So with that in mind, uh, here are the chancellor's reports.
Uh, good morning. Briefly, um, I've already started on the, the white paper that President Shields is, um, requesting to talk about online education. So that is something that Doctor Bowie brought to us, um, and we will have some information for you, um, regarding that. But in exciting news, um, through the Board of Regents and LDH, our School of Nursing was awarded the Nurse Capitation, um, grant funding, which is gonna give us seventy K for fall and seventy K for spring. So basically a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the next two years to support our nursing program. So we are very excited about that. Always love money coming in. Um, as you heard, our groundbreaking should be September twenty-ninth. Hopefully we will see many of you guys there. And, um, in addition, we are working on forming, um, a Center for Global Education. So kind of, um, piggybacking off of what Doctor, uh, Carpenter had mentioned, we have, um, formed a formal partnership with the Institute for Study Abroad, which has an HBCU consortium, um, and a career accelerator, so bringing together opportunities for students to get global education, but it be tied to their career. Um, we're excited about that. We've also launched a rebrand of our Flex U at SUNO, um, piggybacking off of the HBCU consortium that the system already participates in. Um, in addition, we are just excited about having so many students on campus, seeing that increase, um, in enrollment, um, having over two hundred, um, students are our new student orientation, um, this past month. So growth is always lovely and we are excited about it.
That's again.
Yes, Chairman Clayton, Vice Chairman Abraham, and members of this honorable board, President Shields. I will be brief today, but I wanted to just mention a few things. We've got a lot of exciting things happening at Southern University at Shreveport. We just, uh, finished our groundbreaking, uh, which I believe was a success. I want to say thank you to all of you who were able to attend and thank you for those who sent regrets. I also wanted to speak just quickly to, um, online enrollment. Southern University at Shreveport, we currently have five hundred and thirty-four students who are fully enrolled online. And we also, uh, as relates to continuing education and workforce programs, I mean, courses, we have one hundred students enrolled and we are really trying to, uh, increase those numbers. And that's why we're working with the partnerships like Reentry and several other business and industry, um, are in our area that we are partnering with. Doctor Gallois is here with us today. I do hope that next month, that perhaps SUSTL can be included in the conversation. I'll be more than happy to kind of share what we're doing globally as it relates to, uh, continuing education and workforce courses. If you would indulge me just for a few minutes, I have a very quick two-minute, uh, video. I would like to just kind of show you a little bit of the groundbreaking as well as our leadership summit as we prepare for our five-year strategic plan. Should take us about two minutes, it's playing now.
On this very momentous occasion, I mean, I'll tell you what, it's, uh, it's exciting to see where we're going and what we're doing.
On behalf of Chairman Clayton, I just wanted to, uh, recognize, uh, the fact that this is a celebration. Uh, this is time for us to congratulate SUSTL, or Chancellor Gant, who's been here just over two years and is moving this institution in the right direction.
Had it not been for the Lord that was on SUSTL side. Where is SUSTL? So I thank you for everything you've done.
Here we are. It's the groundbreaking at Southern University at Shreveport. All right, come on, we can get a little bit more excited than that.
Thank you.
You're one. I think you got everybody's attention.
Just, just lastly, Mister President, thank you so much for recommending Adopt the Road and, and, uh, actually collaborating with the Department of Transportation. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Doctor McLeans, do you have any movies that you would like to show? You better have good music too.
No movies. I gotta get my game up. Uh, but thank you, Mister Chairman, Vice Chairman, uh, Abraham, President Shields, and honorable board members. Uh, just to piggyback off of what the president was talking about as related to facilities. At the Ag Center, we have, uh, thirty-one facilities, projects, from renovations to, uh, working with some of our existing, uh, properties and facilities. You know, we're located in, uh, physically in thirty-two parishes and operating sixty-four. And these projects are valued at, uh, forty million dollars and all the money is in hand. So we're excited about the projects that will be going on, uh, over the next couple of years. Just a couple of items. A couple of you asked me about the, uh, USDA scholarships. We have two that were, uh, sus- they were suspended. Uh, both are back and I wanted to report to you that they are, uh, in fact, not only back, but they are funding our students this semester. Uh, the, the first one is the USDA eighteen ninety Scholars Program, which is, uh, I think thirty, thirty-five years old. Um, and we have three new scholars. We have twenty-three scholars, uh, on campus, uh, one hundred percent paid, uh, and these students transition into USDA. And we have the largest number eighteen ninety scholars out of the nineteen historically black land-grant institution. Uh, the other one, uh, the newest one, I think, came on in two, twenty twenty. Uh, we call it the David Scott Eighteen Ninety Scholarship. David Scott was the congressman who introduced this, uh, scholarship program, which gives each eighteen ninety a million dollars a year. Uh, last year, it was cut by fifty percent, uh, thanks to, uh, our congressional delegation and other, uh, respective congressional delegations. That was, uh, restored. I want to specifically thank, uh, uh, Congressman Cleo Field, who directly went to the Secretary of Agriculture and to the Ag Committees in the Senate and the House to restore the, store that program. It was very important to us. We have fifty-one students on that scholarship, which, uh, pays for, uh, those individuals to go to school as well. So we have about eighty individuals enjoying that. Um, since we took that cut of five hundred thousand, been very active in the foundation. I want to thank, uh, Al Harrell and Mister Robert Easley. Uh, we've already raised, uh, north of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for new scholarships for this year. And so we continue to be aggressive in our, uh, fundraising efforts to support our student, not only our scholar students, but all of our students to make sure they get across the goal line. So, uh, I love football, so I have to give that analogy. Um, and lastly, last week, and this is just giving me an opportunity to brag on our students, um, all nineteen historical black land-grant institutions participated in a hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary celebration of the Second Morale Act, which gave designation and rise to the eighteen ninety land-grant institution, of which Southern is one. Uh, we had a delegation of thirty-two individuals, faculty, staff, and students. But what I was most proud of is the representation of our students in the College of Ag. Uh, they were phenomenal. They participated in a, uh, cyber game of agriculture, all nineteen schools. Uh, we, we didn't win, but we, uh, showed well. My alma mater, Alabama A&amp;M, actually won, but I was rooting, of course, for, uh, Southern University Jaguars. Uh, but, uh, uh, it was good to see the president of Alabama A&amp;M and, and to, uh, thank them for what they've done for me. The, I think, the, the, with kids got starry eyes when they had the opportunity to go meet and have a listening session with Con- uh, Congressman Cleo Fields. And, uh, the question they asked him, he had to pause a little bit and answer them. Those type of students that we have, they're asking some in-depth questions. And, uh, it was a great session. It, it, it was outstanding and, and those kids were calling their parents and said, we're on the Capitol. Of course, they took a tour of the Capitol. Uh, the congressman made sure that they got a thorough tour. Uh, they went to the Smithsonian, uh, and, and had other activities, uh. And, and so we're really happy, of course, and all of them got a certificate. Now, I talked to him on Monday evening or Tuesday morning and we went to visit on Wednesday. He had the certificates ready and also souvenirs ready for those students. And so they had a great time and they're still talking about it. And so I'm just, uh, proud of, of, of our students in the College of Ag. And, uh, he conveyed to the president that, uh, President Shields told me to convey to him that, uh, we have quality students and you have students from all over the country, HBCUs, but, uh, Southern is unlike no other. So, uh, I was really proud of our students on it. This concludes my report.
Chancellor Washington.
Vice, morning, Vice Chairman, members of the board, Mister President. The, uh, Law Center actually had a security event a day or two before the campus-wide. So in response to the recent events, we have, uh, strengthened our, uh, security protocols at the Law Center. And this includes implementing controls. And this includes implementing controlled access to the Law Center building. We hosted a town meeting with our students a couple of nights ago to address safety concerns. We're expanding access to mental health resources for all members of our SULC family. We're scheduling safety training for faculty and staff. We're encouraging all of our SULC family to sign up for the JAG Safe App. That's the way that we get notified of emergency events on the landmass. We also have been watching the big, beautiful bill and trying to determine the impact that it's going to have on us. As you know, it calls for the elimination of the Grad Plus Loan Program. And we currently have five hundred and sixty-one students who receive assistance under that program. And so our Office of Financial Aid is identifying private lenders who can offer comparable loan products to assist our students with financing. Lastly, we have launched what we call the One Thousand Challenge. It's an initiative inviting one thousand alums to contribute one hundred dollars per month on a recurring basis. We have, with the assistance of the Foundation, broken our alums down into tiers with respect to giving. And so this initiative is directed at our working-class alums.
What precipitated the event that you had? What was the cause of it?
Well, we had a, we had a individual who was walking around in the law school a couple of Sunday nights ago. And he asked one of our students, do you know where, what would happen to you if you died tonight? And so with the assistance of the campus police, we were able to track that individual down. And then on Thursday, when we had the campus-wide event, the FBI and the city police actually interviewed that individual, determined that he was not a threat. But they're going to continue to monitor.
Good work. Thanks for the safety care. Chancellor Pierre?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Ken. You have a report, but I just wanted to update a couple of things. One, we actually have a meeting with General Honore at two o'clock this afternoon about seeking some grant funding for some opportunities to further enhance our security. Also, I was in conversation with the White House and the White House Initiative on HBCUs. There are still serve-pro grants available. These are dollars that the Law Center secured several years ago when we had the bomb threat. So those dollars are still available and we're going to work to get that done with the Baton Rouge campus. And we have a call scheduled with them next week as it relates to that. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was we have been working to provide a new FD Clark Activity Center Center-Hung scoreboard. This is something that has been an issue that I've learned about. And we have a proposal to replace it. The total cost for just the Center-Hung scoreboard is about six hundred and thirty-five thousand. When you add in the issues related to sound, that's probably another hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I want to thank Vice Chairman Abraham for joining on the call because I know this is something he's been interested in. And Board Member Lawson also has been interested in this issue. We believe we're very close to be able to submitting a deal. As far as funding, we've engaged the Foundation and I believe the Foundation has been able to make a commitment that they could put up fifty percent of the funding ultimately that we would need. And we are working through, we've identified, obviously, self-generated dollars and other dollars that we believe we could do this project with some financing that I think the company is going to have, provide to us, which is Watch Fire. And so we are working on this very, very diligently to get this. I think if we're talking about from a timing perspective, one of the things that we have to be able to do is, obviously, because of the size of the project, we would have to get Board approval. So it may be wise for us that the Board would consider giving us the authorization to go for it and getting this thing done as quickly as possible, working with athletics with FD Clark Activity Center Facilities, Mr. Bowie, to see if we could do everything necessary to have this project ready as soon as possible. And this is just something that I've been brought into the conversation over the last three weeks. And we've been working very diligently on this.
Thanks. You're done?
Yes, nice.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you again, Chairman, for an opportunity. Just a couple of things I wanted to chat on. Number one, I know we hinted on it already earlier about the campus safety, but on behalf of the parents of the students, we got those, a lot of parents that are concerned about their kids coming on campus. And you've got Mr. President Shields and your administrator did a great job of ushering that in and securing the system for those few days. So I thought that was really great. Just wanted to share some thoughts from alumni from there. Also, Mr. Chairman, thank you again for allowing alumni to have an opportunity to participate in the task force. That's been really something everyone's interested in. And I've been getting a lot of feedback on input and how we can create, attack some of these challenges that we heard here today for the university. So a lot of alumni engaged. I'm getting a lot of emails and I'll be forwarding it over to you and the group, Mr. Abraham, to work on so we can meet some of those challenges. Give Day, just wanted to give a shout out to our alumni out there for Give Day. Along with Mr. Rail here, I think we're up a hundred and sixty-eight percent in the number of donors this year. So I think that we're doing a good job of engaging our alumni, something that we're going to need to do moving forward as we get to some of these challenges. Lastly, we got homecoming in a couple of weeks. So I want to challenge our alumni to come back this year and see some of the work, the positive work that's been going on on campus that we got going on. There's a lot of good things going on around campus and you'll see that here in a couple of weeks. So just wanted to encourage everyone to come back home. Go Jags.
Mr. President, you're highly visible. You move around. Your charge to the task force yesterday was thought-provoking. And as the President of our alumni, you do a great job. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Al Harrell, our Foundation.
I'll be brief. Just want to give you an update on our Capitol campaign. We are currently still in the silent phase of our campaign. We've raised and got commitments for a little bit north, three hundred and twenty million dollars thus far, both from capital, both from private and public resources. Our goal is seven hundred and fifty million dollars and we hope to be able to publicly launch our campaign and announce that number in two thousand and twenty-seven with the campaign ending in two thousand and thirty. Also want to give you an update on our annual fundraising campaign. To that note, Give Day was a real success for us. We had about a twenty-five percent increase over the previous year. We raised a little bit north of, over that ninety-day period, right at about nine million dollars. Previous year, we were about seven million. So doing really well. Right now, year-to-date, we're at about eighteen point five million dollars with the hopes being over thirty million dollars at the end of the. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The Board of Supervisors will now have to go into session to deal with the evaluation of the President. It's a personnel matter and the Board may go in executive session. Once in executive session, the Board will not take any votes or any motions. At this time, I would entertain a motion to convene into the executive session to deal with the evaluation of the President. It's been moved by Mr. Reverend Donore and seconded by Mr. Matthews. Roll call vote as to going into executive session. No, I think we should go in the other place. Let the audience stay here. Roll call vote.
Attorney Tony Clayton.
Yes.
Mr. Reggie Abraham.
Yes.
Attorney Quincy Cawthorn. Mrs. L. Dudley. Mrs. Maple Gaines. Mr. Donore Henry. Mr. Myron K. Lawson. Mr. Aaron Manzi. Mr. Chris Massengill. Mr. Paul Matthews. Attorney Des Moines Rutledge. Attorney Edwin Shorty. Mrs. Ann Smith. Reverend Dr. Samuel Colbert. Dr. Ronnie Whitfield. Mr. Henry Whitehorn. Unannounced and members present.
Board will now reconvene into executive session and will suspend the meeting for a short period of time. You guys can stay in here. We're going to go into the other room.
One, two, three. I don't know. I just want to be careful where the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. One more person come in, I can, I can do it.
All right, good. I think I got a quote. Southern University Board was in executive session. While in executive, executive session, there were no votes or no motion taken. I'll entertain a motion to re-adjourn.
Second, second.
Shorty's second by Mr. Lawson. Any other business with this board? Roll call vote back in, you're right, roll call vote. Yes.
Brett C. Abraham, Tony P. Poplar, Dell Dudley, Mike McCain, Don Ray Henry, Byron K. Lawson, Aaron Manzick, Chris Maskingale, Paul Matthews, Attorney Boyd Rutledge, Attorney Edward Shorty, Dan Smith, Reverend Dr. Seth Fulmer, Dr. Ronnie Whitfield, Henry Whitehorne.
And let, let the record reflect this maple says yes, we can reconvene, correct? All right. Everybody's present, they've all voted, we can reconvene, we reconvene.
Motion to adjourn.
Any other business? Hearing none. Entertaining motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Reverend Henry, seconded by Ms. Ann Smith, we'll adjourn.